Good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Jerry Dockery from Crab Apple First Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation.
Good evening. Let's pray. Our Father, we humble ourselves before you tonight, and we're mindful of tragic events around our world, various communities, and our hearts go out to those situations. We pray for your intervention and for your direction, Lord, for your healing. And it reminds us, Lord, of how fortunate we are here in this place, and we're thankful for our leadership, for those who serve us as first responders, who stand in the gap. We pray that you would give them wisdom, that you give them direction, so they seek to provide a community that is safe and orderly, one that, Lord, we can rejoice in and celebrate together. So we pray for your continued protection, and we ask, Lord, for your presence here tonight as they discuss and plan. We pray that all that we do might be glorifying to your name and might continue to be edifying to us and our community. And we offer this prayer in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Dockery. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, June 5th, 2017, to order. Sooty, if you'd please make, call the roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the June 5th, 2017, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And Councilmember Rick Morick is absent for the record. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight, and we've got some special guests here tonight. We're excited that you're here for some presentations. Sooty, if you'll please sound the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 17138.
Okay, one item we'd like to consider is the ordinance to amend Chapter 4 alcoholic beverages to put that on first presentation. Is there anything else staff would want to? How about council? Okay, I'll open up for a motion on the agenda with the changes that are stated.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Kuntz, second from Councilmember Lusk. On the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. And I ask that before I go through, do we have any general public comment? Okay. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or city council members in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Okay, Sooty, you say we do have some general public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. We have four speakers. The first one is Francia Linden.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Francia Linden. I live at 14810 East Bluff Road in Milton. I'll be brief. I'm guessing that probably 50% of the residents in Milton are women. Many are professionals, some have been involved in extensive, extensively in preservation, whether it be historical preservation or land use or land use preservation, parks, passive park, parks, and preserving open space and the environment. Many are involved with equestrian, in the equestrian community also, and the tie to horses in that community is central to Milton's identity. Yet it is striking, there aren't any women on any boards that have any power to decide issues related to land use or conservation. This didn't become so glaring an issue until the city council made it, made its selection for the Green Space Advisory Committee, when women who, who had all of these markers or held all of these markers and who had expertise in these areas were passed over and were eventually rejected from the committee. And that's, it's at that point that it became clear to me and a number of women that we just are like invisible to the city council in terms of boards, and it doesn't matter if we have the expertise, if we've made the commitment, if we've done the time, it doesn't matter. So I'm hoping that in the future, the city will bypass this, what appears to be, lack of diversity and consider people for their efforts, their intelligence, their expertise, and not just look at gender. Thank you.
Thank you. Sooty, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our next speaker is James Fry.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. James Fry, 822 Hallbrook Lane, Milton 3004. Not here on behalf of any organization. This is only my second city council meeting. I'm here just because the first city council meeting I came to on April 24th, which is really just to observe, had a, an agenda item that was a petition for rezoning of a property on Hopewell, and I just sat and observed. You know, the public was pretty much unanimously against it, albeit only three or four people. I'm guessing they're regulars. Your staff recommended not proceeding with it, so didn't recommend it. And the only person on behalf of the owner was a surveyor, so you probably wouldn't be surprised that I was surprised when I read last week, Friday, that this council had approved that ordinance, I think it was five to two. So I just, I just wanted to tell you as a resident, I'm extremely disappointed that you all would move forward with changing that property from agricultural to residential, giving them 17 lots on 14 and a half acres, and I think you're just doing a disservice to your constituents. I mean, the single biggest issue we face is traffic, and I know you, you can't control what comes out of Cherokee County and elsewhere, but I mean, within your own city, I mean, home building is not an economic engine that drives the city, and so I'm just really disappointed that you all would move forward with that. That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Sooty, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Next speaker is Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 1562 Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. Good evening, Council. In the last few weeks, two major events have converged that have had tremendous negative consequences for citizens. The first event was the approval of the Hopewell Road rezoning. The second event was a huge hike in property taxes for many Milton residents. The two events are related. Your decisions are now beginning to hit voters squarely in their wallets, and tonight I will discuss how and why. A concerned citizen downloaded 2017 property valuations for me. For the northern area of Milton around King Lake, mean and median property valuations increased 56%. For four undeveloped properties, the valuations increased 178% on average. In calculating property values, I think Fulton County partly got it wrong and partly got it right. I have looked at their figures, and in quite a few cases, cases, valuations bear little resemblance to reality. One home was valued at its original 2009 purchase price instead of its recent 2017 purchase price. In another case, two nearly identical homes diverged in their valuations by 55%. In yet another case, the valuations of two very similar homes right next to each other diverged by 112%. There are so many similar examples of obviously wrong valuations that I believe Fulton County's valuations are mostly arbitrary. So what did Fulton County get right? Despite their valuations, I think that Milton's property values, especially raw land, increased. In fact, I think they're experiencing a real estate bubble in Milton that will burst within the next year, and I lay the blame for this squarely on council. Increasingly, the land available for development in Milton is marginal. This land tends to be bought by land speculators that have or are looking for loopholes to allow profitable development. These same land speculators often concoct schemes to bend, break, and change the rules to their benefit. Their dubious schemes end up before city council where they get a sympathetic ear. Three council members are reliable votes for virtually any request from these developers. Accordingly, developers need only find one additional vote. So the takeaway is that developers are willing to pay sky-high prices for increasingly marginal land in Milton because they know council will endorse their schemes, and even if a developer miscalculates, he knows that council will approve variances to correct his mistakes. In short, council is interfering in the market for undeveloped land in Milton. Council, this is economics 101. If marginal land can be developed more profitably, then developers will pay more for it, and that is exactly what is occurring in Milton, and it is a primary driver of the spike in property taxes. So what does this mean for citizens besides higher taxes? It means a lower quality of life due to congested roads, overcrowded schools, and stressed infrastructure. It means acceleration in the loss of farms, equestrian properties, and green space. It means a real estate bust with all that entails, such as local, such as more foreclosures, bankrupt subdivisions, and seizing up of local real estate markets. It means we can buy less green space with our bond money. So yes, Milton City Council does bear some blame for the current property tax debacle, and council needs to start owning the problem and taking corrective actions before it is too late. A good start would be to stop interfering with Milton's real estate market on behalf of developers. Please stop approving developer schemes to generate obscene profits at the expense of citizens. Thank you.
Okay, Sooty, if you'd please call the next speaker.
Our last general comment comes from Mr. Robin Frickton.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Robin Frickton. I live at 2970 Francis Road. Been here about 33 years, and you're probably going to hear more about the assessments than you want to. First, Mayor, I appreciate the email about the, the meeting with the, with Fulton County. Definitely be going to that. That's the only thing I've gotten is really from you and, and about the assessment and talking. My only thing is, I know you guys, it wasn't you guys that did the assessments or anything, but you do control the millage rate, and I am hoping that you'll look at these assessments whenever they finalize and reconsider maybe lowering the millage rate, because we, we do have the, everything going up with the bond we had for the, the green space. So I'm hoping that you, that all of you will consider, you know, lowering the millage rate a little bit. You'll have the assessments will probably remain this high for quite some time, if not higher later, but also consider, you have retirees that are on a fixed budget. I, myself is one, and now I'm having to readjust my budget to handle the, the increase and the potential increase in the, in the taxes. So I would hope you consider lowering the millage rate a little bit and help out the, the citizens of Milton. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Sooty, is that all our public comment?
That's all, sir.
Okay. And move on to the consent agenda. Sooty, if you'd please call that item.
First item is approval of the May 15th, 2017, regular city council meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 17139. Next is approval of City of Milton Title VI, Non-Discrimination Agreement, Agenda Item Number 17140. Our third consent agenda item is approval of the following subdivision plat: Pittman Family Farms, Land Lot 916, Framenville Road, Minor Plat, three lots, 4.69 total acres, .64 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 17141. Our fourth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of the following subdivision plat: Michael Bradley Flack, Land Lot 1134, Mid Broadwell Road, Minor Plat, two lots, 1.496 total acres, 1.3 lots per acre, Agenda Item Number 17142.
Okay, I have a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agendas prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, Sooty, if we can move on to reports and presentations, and if you would please call those items.
Next item is a proclamation honoring Cambridge and Milton students who chose to serve their country in a military career. This is being presented by Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Thank you, Sooty. Bless you. As has been the custom here in the last several years, we've prepared this proclamation for recent graduates from Milton and Cambridge who are, who chose to enter the military service. And in light of the actions that have been going around the world here in the last couple of years and the threats to our own country, I have to commend young folks for making that choice to help defend our country. And when you consider less than 1% of our total population of 323 million, this is pretty noble effort on these young graduates, and I commend them. And I'll read this proclamation, and after I do, if the students or the graduates that are here would come forward, we'll present this proclamation to you. Proclamation honoring Cambridge High School and Milton High School students who chose to serve their country in a military career, whereas one of the main responsibilities of our federal government is to provide for the national defense, and whereas the branches of the United States military have a long and prestigious history of shaping and producing the finest young minds in America, producing not only soldiers but also scholars, national leaders, and diplomats. And whereas every year, thousands of students across America choose to pursue both higher education and military service by attending U.S. Military Service Academies, military universities, or enrolling in officer training programs. And whereas in order to qualify for selection, these students must excel in academic, athletic, and leadership abilities, and whereas these students will be developed mentally, morally, and physically, and will be imbued with the highest ideals of duty and loyalty and with the core values of honor, courage, and commitment before being commissioned as officers or enlisted men. And whereas through their dedication, these students have displayed exemplary character by choosing to better serve their country, their community, their families, and themselves at a time in their lives when such an important choice is honorable. And whereas Milton High School students, and I'll read their names off, and I may butcher some, so pardon me ahead of time. Milton Cambridge High School students Wesley Sekera Gomitas will join the Coast Guard, Michael Colizar will attend the United States Air Force Academy, and Juan Munoz Perez will join the United States Marine Corps. Milton High School students Sana Bagh has received the Army ROTC Four-Year National Scholarship, which will be applied at Georgia Tech. Additionally, Sana has been placed on the national waitlist for the United States Military Academy at West Point. Zachary Bellin will join the military. Lucas Deleve will attend the University of North Georgia in the Senior Military College Army ROTC program. Renata Deleve will attend the University of North Georgia in the Senior Military College Army ROTC program, and Mason Nutter will attend the Air Force Academy. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Milton, hereby honor Milton students who choose to serve their country in a military career, given, given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on this fifth day of June 2017. And I'll ask those graduates to come forward, and we'll present these proclamations.
And I just, I want to say, not only thank you to Councilmember Lusk for presenting that proclamation, but a sincere debt of gratitude from not only me personally, but our council and, more important, our citizens and our fellow Americans. And just thank you guys for, for stepping up and selflessly protecting us and, you know, continuing what, we've got a great life here in the United States, and it's, it's because folks, before you guys have, have elected to serve, and thank you very much for continuing the, for the future. Okay, Sooty, if you would please sound the next item.
Our next item is an MDA City of Milton Firefighter Appreciation Proclamation. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. And moving forward in the same spirit, also very important, and we appreciate everything that our firefighters do too, to keep us protected. So I am proud to, tonight, to present this proclamation, the MDA City of Milton Firefighter Appreciation, and it just, it says a lot, not only for our, our department, but our community on, on the, just the generosity that our citizens show and to help with the MDA. So I have a proclamation here, the MDA City of Milton Firefighter Appreciation, whereas dedicated and selfless firefighters in Milton provide vital and life-saving services to the citizens of their community, and whereas, at a moment's notice, these men and women risk their lives subduing fires and rescuing those trapped in infernos, as well as saving citizens from emergencies that could have been deadly situations, and whereas, Georgia firefighters contribute significantly to the continued well-being of Georgians through their outstanding commitment to community service. Their sense of duty and responsibility is evidenced by their hundreds of volunteer hours and annual boot drives to collect funds to fight muscular dystrophy. And whereas, firefighters in the City of Milton unselfishly donate their time and energy to supporting the Muscular Dystrophy Association and raising more than $639,000 over our 11-year partnership. And whereas, many of Milton's most deserving citizens have benefited from the funds raised by the firefighters and the Fill the Boot campaign. And these public servants make invaluable contributions to our community and the tasks they perform. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the City of Milton, hereby proclaim April through September as MDA firefighter appreciation time in the City of Milton, and encourage all citizens of Milton, Georgia to recognize and support the efforts of these firefighters on behalf of MDA. And this is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Milton, Georgia on the fifth day of May 2017. And if council could join me and our firefighters and MDA folks.
I don't know that I have all the numbers in my head, but, you know, and what I said earlier, not only thank you to the firefighters who are giving their time and efforts out there, but especially to our citizens and their generosity, you know, the number of way compared to other news towers, correct?
We are, we are number one in the state.
Yeah. That's thank you to everybody in the audience and to the citizens.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thank you for helping. Yes. I'm glad it was in the audience.
Okay, Sudi, I have one more presentation. Would you please call that item?
Our next item is presentation of City of Milton's new firefighters, Chief Bob Edgar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. It's always a pleasure, but tonight's a little special. As I've talked about in the past, we've had some vacancies in the department through retirees and other employees seeking other opportunities, which resulted in eight vacancies in our fire department. What we have done to work through those vacancies until we could fill them is the admin staff has stepped up, taken responsibility for some of the operational roles, as well as our firefighters in the field pulling double duty and all of that, so we could continue to provide the service that the community expects and what we achieve to deliver every single day. But I'm pleased tonight that we have seven of our newest firefighters here this evening. And the eighth firefighter will be joining us in July. But these seven here are, is the largest group of firefighters we've hired since deployment. So what I'd like to do, what we've done the first time we had this larger group or the initial deployment, is the mayor swore all of our firefighters in under the oath of office. So I would like to do that again this evening. And as I read the names of our firefighters, if they would please come up. Stephen Robertson, Matthew Puckett, Nicholas Armenta, Amanda Wilson, Kayla Bousha, Derek Hoffman, Kelly Duncan, and Brandon Carey will be starting with us in July. And I would also, a special note is that one of our firefighters up here actually grew up here in the City of Milton and is a graduate of Milton High School. So we welcome him as having one of part of our family that, here in Milton. So Mayor, if you would like to come down and read them the oath and have them take the oath of office?
And as Chief said, we, it's really nice, we've got a wide variety. We've got new firefighters from Colorado, Arizona, Milton High School. So we certainly welcome you guys to our community. I was telling them earlier, what makes Milton so special, and I think they will learn real quick, is that our citizens really, really care about our department. And our community really gets it that these guys, you know, these are the ones that went something, even though they don't know that many persons would do what their life and jeopardy to say you and step out. So we owe them eternal debt of gratitude, as well as all of our public safety and the military. But we're just, we're proud to have you guys here, and we're, you know, welcome you, and I think you will hopefully enjoy it here. You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear and affirm that I am qualified to hold the position of firefighter, to which I am appointed, and for so long as I am employed, to the City of Milton, I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the State of Georgia, and I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties of my position consciously and without malice or partiality to the best of my ability. I further swear and affirm to obey, to adhere to, to uphold and enforce the laws of the United States of America, and the State of Georgia, and the City of Milton at all times. I further swear and affirm that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the City of Milton, and the officers appointed over me according to law, so help me God. Thank you. Welcome. Council wants to join us for a quick summary.
Well, take a step forward, and then they'll fill in behind you.
Long notes? Every time I thought you were done, you kept going.
So now everyone has to take a step back. Fight just a little shift this way, right? At least not a little bit. Right there, and then this side, take a half a step over.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Beautiful. I'm sorry. It's been a mistake.
Okay, Sudi, if we can move on to our first presentation, if you'll sound that item.
This item was added by motion and vote during the approval of the agenda. Consideration of an ordinance of the City of Milton, Georgia to amend Chapter Four, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Bring Your Own Beverage, Agenda Item Number Seventeen One Four Five.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the first presentation items as read by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Councilmember Thurmond, second, Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sudi. We don't have any items under public hearing or zoning agendas tonight, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Sudi, if you'll please call that item.
First item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A related to Chapter Four, Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Agenda Item Number Seventeen One Two Nine. First presentation was at the May fifteenth council meeting. Ms. Sarah Ladark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're coming to you again regarding the alcohol ordinance. This time, we're shaping up the way we're going to charge for it. And there are four main things, three main things that are highlighted in your packet. Bernadette did a great job of redlining it for you. The first is actually creating the pricing for the three new permits that were approved with the Chapter Four amendments. The second is the prorated, to start prorating the fees monthly instead of only doing it one time of year in July. And the third is adjusting the interest rate charged for delinquent people, persons, establishments to correlate to HB nine sixty, make it what, correct, which is about, there's some math for it. It's point five six percent per month. Those are the changes.
Okay. Any questions for Sarah on that? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Seventeen Dash One Two Nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Longoria, and I believe it was second from Councilmember Coontz.
That's fine.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, move on to our next unfinished business item. Sudi, if you'd please read it out for us.
This is consideration of an ordinance to amend Appendix A, Parks and Recreation Fees and Other Charges, Chapter Thirty-four, Section Twenty-four of the Milton City Code, Agenda Item Number Seventeen One Two Eight. First presentation was at the May fifteenth city council meeting. Mr. Jim Craig.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of the change to Appendix A for the fees associated with parks and recreation activities. Specifically, what this agenda, what this change does is it changes the pricing schedule that we're using for renting of facilities. It also allows us to add facilities that the city has since brought on board that we can now make available to the public for rental.
Any questions or comments?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number Seventeen Dash One Two Eight.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coontz, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I also would like to just take a quick moment and let you folks know this is a very happy day in the City of Milton. We started our camps. Basketball camp had fifty kids in it. Camp Joyful Souls sold out. And as of today, we have sold out our fourth week of Camp Joyful Souls. We've already broken the attendance records for the total number of different kids who are coming in. And just thank you all for the support. The kids, the smiles on faces today was just fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, we'll move on. Sudi, will you please sound the next unfinished business item?
Next item is consideration of T Seventeen Dash Zero Two, VC Seventeen Dash Zero Four, One Two Nine One Zero, Highway Nine by Pinnacle Towers LLC to remove existing one hundred and eighty-foot wireless communications tower and replace with a new one hundred and eighty-foot wireless communication tower and shift fourteen feet to the north and request variance to reduce tower setback from two hundred and seventy feet to one hundred and sixty-five feet. Section Fifty-four Dash Six D Two, Agenda Item Number Seventeen One Twenty-Six. First presentation was at the May fifteenth regular city council meeting. I do have one public comment from the applicant.
Okay.
And Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. The first slide shows outlined in red the site in question that we're discussing tonight. Second shows the current zoning for that, which is T five. This is the aerial overall plan. This is fairly hard to read, so I think this slide is a little better. And it shows the existing, which is in the lower right-hand corner, and the proposed, which is further up to the left on the site here. The elevation of the towers are the same. And the request is by Pinnacle Towers, represented by Ellen Smith, who was here this evening to discuss this application. The existing use is that part of it is used by Stanton Heating and Air Conditioning. And then there is an existing one hundred and eighty-foot monopole communications tower also on the site. Requested modification is to remove the existing one hundred and eighty-foot wireless communications tower and replace it with a new one hundred and eighty-foot wireless communication tower and shift the replacement tower forty feet to the north. The requested concurrent variance is to reduce the tower setback from two hundred and seventy feet to one hundred and sixty-five feet. Terms of background, since the late nineteen nineties, the existing one hundred and eighty-foot tower has been located on an approximately point one-one acre portion of the property. The existing tower currently supports four wireless carriers, being Sprint, T-Mobile, Verizon, and AT&amp;T Mobility. Staff notes that the mayor and city council amended Chapter Fifty-four Telecommunication in July of two thousand and thirteen to allow for modifications of existing towers, which include the proposed request to move it within the leased area. In addition, the telecommunications ordinance provides that concurrent variance requests may be requested. By way of information, this is the third request for modification of a telecommunications facility with concurrent variances that has been before the mayor and city council for their consideration. The previous two facilities were located at three hundred Batesville Road, and then the other one was at thirteen seven hundred Highway Nine. Modification request is that the Crown Castle is seeking to remove the existing tower and replace it with a new tower that is the same height, one hundred and eighty feet, and remains within the existing leased area. To ensure that there is as little interruption to service from the existing tower, the relocated tower will be constructed approximately forty feet from the existing tower, and the carriers will be relocated one by one from the existing to the relocated tower before the existing tower is removed. Concurrent variance request is to reduce the tower setback from two hundred and seventy feet to one hundred and sixty-five feet. The setback is required to be one and a half times the tower height, and therefore, the request is to reduce it from the two seventy requirement to one hundred and sixty-five feet. The new tower, one hundred and sixty-five feet from the rear property line, will be approximately fifteen feet closer to the rear property line than the existing tower, which is approximately one hundred and eighty feet from center line of the existing facility to the property line. The tract immediately to the rear or north of the property is residentially used in Zone T Four Open. The applicant seeks to reduce the required tower setback from two hundred and seventy feet, the tower height plus fifty percent, to one hundred and sixty-five feet. Although the proposed tower is fifteen feet higher than the falls of one hundred and sixty-five feet, the applicant submitted a report from the tower engineer stating that this design enables pole to fail through a combination of bending and buckling in the upper portion of the pole under a catastrophic wind loading. Failure in this manner will result in the upper portion of the pole folding over the lower portion, resulting in a fall radius no greater than fifty-two feet. The concurrent variance is not required to show hardship. Nevertheless, the applicant's letter of intent states the four considerations that regular variances require. The telecommunications ordinance allows the applicant to request a modification that will allow separate wireless carriers to co-locate on the tower, and that the co-location would negate the need for a new tower in this area. The facility meets all other requirements of the telecommunications ordinance. Staff recommendation, based on the fact that the proposed request satisfy the purpose and intent of the telecommunications ordinance, staff recommends approval conditional of T Seventeen Dash O Two and approval conditional of VC Seventeen Dash O Four, which encourages the development of wireless communications while protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the public and maintaining aesthetic integrity of the community. Recommended condition, should the mayor and city council choose to approve the application, staff recommends the following conditions. One, the maximum height of facility shall be one hundred and eighty feet. Said facility shall be a monopole in appearance. Two, the total leased area shall remain in the same location in approximately point one-one acre. Three, to provide a tower setback of one hundred and sixty-five feet from the center line of the wireless facility to the north property line as shown on the site plan submitted on April twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. That is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Are there any questions for Kathy on this? Karen?
I know in the past, we have required the towers to be, I guess we call them the mono kinds or whatever, so they actually look more like a tree. Is there a reason why in this case, we're recommending, you're recommending just a regular?
tower will be constructed approximately forty feet from the existing tower, and the carriers will be relocated one by one from the existing to the relocated tower before the existing tower is removed. Concurrent variance request is to reduce the tower setback from two-hundred-and-seventy feet to one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet. The setback is required to be one and a half times the tower height, and therefore, the request is to reduce it from the two-seventy requirement to one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet. The new tower, one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet from the rear property line, will be approximately fifteen feet closer to the rear property line than the existing tower, which is approximately one-hundred-and-eighty feet from centerline of the existing facility to the property line. The tract immediately to the rear or north of the property is residentially used and zone T four open. The applicant seeks to reduce the required tower setback from two-hundred-and-seventy feet, the tower height plus fifty percent, to one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet. Although the proposed tower is fifteen feet higher than the falls of one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet, the applicant submitted a report from the tower engineer stating that this design enables pole to fail through a combination of bending and buckling in the upper portion of the pole under a catastrophic wind loading. Failure in this manner will result in the upper portion of the pole folding over the lower portion, resulting in a fall radius no greater than fifty-two feet. The concurrent variance is not required to show hardship. Nevertheless, the applicant's letter of intent states the four considerations that regular variances require. The telecommunications ordinance allows the applicant to request a modification that will allow separate wireless carriers to co- to co- co- locate on the tower, and that the co-location would negate the need for a new tower in this area. The facility meets all other requirements of the telecommunications ordinance. Staff recommendation, based on the fact that the proposed request satisfy the purpose and intent of the telecommunications ordinance, staff recommends approval conditional of T Seventeen dash O two and approval conditional of VC Seventeen dash O four, which encourages the development of wireless communications while protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the public and maintaining aesthetic integrity of the community. Recommended condition, should the Mayor and City Council choose to approve the application, staff recommends the following conditions. One, the maximum height of the facility shall be one-hundred-and-eighty feet. Said facility shall be a monopole in appearance. Two, the total leased area shall remain in the same location in approximately point-one-one acre. Three, to provide a tower setback of one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet from the centerline of the wireless facility to the north property line as shown on the site plan submitted on April twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. That is my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Are there any questions for Kathy on this? Karen?
I know in the past, we have required the towers to be, I guess we call them the mono pines or whatever, so they actually look more like a tree. Is there a reason why, in this case, we're recommending, you're recommending just a regular pole?
It, it looks like that what the proposed versus the new is the same, correct?
Right.
Yes.
But to Karen's point, yeah, maybe not a, either slick pole or maybe a fake pine tree or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just know in the past, we have required them to put in the ones that actually kind of look like big fake trees.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
And why this time, we were not requiring that?
No particular reason. And I, I mean, that's certainly a question we can ask the applicant if they're willing to substitute.
Also, it appears that, that the one toll, a pole will be built and then everything moved over from the other one, then taken down. Is there a maximum time that they would have, that we would have the two poles there?
I, I, again, I think that would be a question for the applicant.
But we can make that a condition of our zoning, okay.
Any other questions? I have a question. You're looking for a reduced setback or difference where they're moving the pole. The best I could tell, as far as affected neighbors, does it look like, you know, it looks like it's kind of in the middle of the parking lot? Is that going to affect any homeowners any more than what's already there, in your opinion from our staff's side?
No, we didn't really feel that would be the case at all.
Okay. I mean, it looks, you know, from the plat, that it possibly wasn't, but I want to make sure.
Excuse me. It's only the parcel to the north is zoned T four open, which is a existing residence that lives, that backs up, but their frontage, I believe, is on Webb Road. But the rear of their property is adjacent to this parcel, and that was the reason for the, the need for the concurrent variance and the explanation of how the tower, obviously, it, it doesn't meet the one and a half, but the applicant has submitted the information how it would basically collapse and not be a threat to the adjacent property.
Okay. And I guess my other question, which I believe, you know, I want to make sure this is not impacting existing homeowner or, you know, property owner any more negatively than it already is. Any others? Joe?
Yeah. So is the only failure mode that we're expecting is the tower's going to buckle under high wind?
I think the applicant can answer that more thoroughly. In the actual engineer's report, there was other scenarios, I believe. So that was just the one that I quoted in the presentation, but they can address that more specifically.
Yeah. If, in fact, you know, if we don't have any more questions for staff, I think the applicant wanted to make a public comment and then certainly can answer questions.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Ellen Smith, one hundred Galleria Parkway, Suite eighteen-hundred, Atlanta, Georgia. I have the pleasure of representing Pinnacle, also known as Crown Castle, before you this evening, along with Heather Wasnick, who's a project manager with Crown. And first, I should say, congratulations to you on new city hall. This is my first opportunity to make a presentation to you here, and it's beautiful. And more importantly, as I've shared with the mayor before, I think you've accomplished a goal of making yourselves not so intimidating for people who come before you. So it's beautiful facility, welcome to it, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. This reminded me that I was before you, many years ago, with probably dark brown hair that was longer and not as many gray hairs, to change your ordinance to allow what we'll call a drop and swap, right? You have an existing telecommunications tower that may have the likelihood of failure, and we'd like to replace it with one that will not have the same likelihood of failure. And I'm going to address that question a little bit more. But we did amend the ordinance with the council and the mayor in a completely filled room, the first time we came in before you to do that drop and swap on Batesville Road, with a tree tower. So the tower, if you might recall, that was taken down there was, I don't know, one-hundred-and-twenty-foot, one-hundred-and-fifty-foot flat hole, was replaced with the mono pine that's substantially taller. In this particular scenario, we're talking about property that originally was zoned C one, it does have an existing tower on the property. We are replacing it with like-for-like, including the height. So the one on Batesville Road, part of the reason that we switched from a flagpole was a technical issue. Part of the other reason we switched to design for a mono pine was because we had a number of neighbors who were protect, who were concerned about the increased height of that tower and those new residential subdivisions that were being built around that site at the time. In this particular situation, you have a piece of property that since the early nineteen-nineties has been used for heating and air control business. This tower has been on-site at the design and the height, one-hundred-and-eighty feet. It's a little bit taller, actually, one-hundred-and-eighty-five when you add the lightning rod that's at the top of the tower. We're proposing a like-for-like because we're truly replacing and just moving it roughly fifteen feet closer to neighboring property line. There is one residential property to the north of us. It's relatively unused-looking in terms of that single-family residence, but we are still going to be almost tower height away from that property line. We are here before you for the concurrent variance primarily because otherwise, your ordinance, if we met the setback requirements, we would be administratively pursuing this replacement tower. Just to give you a little more flesh on the bones, the property is about an acre and a half. It's a fairly small rectangular narrow piece of property. It's fully improved. Not only is the existing tower there, there's an existing building, there's a septic field, which is why we have to move a little bit north and frankly closer to that residential zoned piece of property because we can't move directly to the west because of existing improvements and primarily the septic field that's there and the septic tank that's located on the property. The existing tower is fully occupied, and it has been modified over the past almost twenty years. It's been modified more than three times to allow those carriers to swap out new antennas, modify their equipment to continue to provide the services to their customers. We can't modify it anymore, and we have pending requests from those existing carriers to upgrade their facility. To do it, we have to take the tower down and replace it. We're looking to stay within the existing leased area, so that point-one-one acre leased area is not going to change, which was also different than the Batesville Road property. That leased area was expanding because we were adding tenants. We don't need to do that here. We're staying within the existing leased area. But the forty-feet shift and the fifteen-feet-to-the-north shift allows us to build the new tower, relocate those existing carriers, and take the old tower down without an interruption in service. You asked specifically, was there a timeframe within which we would be willing to take down the old tower? As soon as we've relocated all those existing tenants, I expect it would take no more than two to three months as a safe outside window. I'd suggest, if the Mayor and City Council prefers, including a condition that requires us to remove the existing tower within one-hundred-and-twenty days after completion of the relocation of all those existing carriers. That would be a way to resolve concern to the extent, it's in our best interest to take it down. We don't have the right under at least two towers, but we will be taking it down if you want a timeframe on that. Happy to agree to it as well. The wireless ordinance that we did amend, Kathy already gave you sort of the requirements. I'm happy to go through those. We did that in our letter of intent, and we, staff report has included that as well. We agreed to the conditions that the staff has recommended. I'm forgetting something that I want to tell you. Oh. Structural integrity. So I appreciate the staff's highlighting failure and how it's designed. The real key is the part before that, that the engineer's letter states, which is, although the pole is not designed to fail, so just so we're all clear, it isn't designed to fail. In fact, it's designed, and you have engineer certifications, that will meet all wind loading requirements that both the state of Georgia, federal government requires we meet for new construction and specifically for tower construction. But stronger sections than required in analysis are provided in the lower sections of the pole. So it is designed to have a breakpoint, so that if there is a failure, and it is defined in the report as a catastrophic wind loading, so way in excess of what we're required to build, there's a catastrophe, it is designed to buckle so that the tower will essentially fall upon itself. It won't fall straight over. It would be designed to break. The top portion of the tower would be designed to fall within our leased area, within our property, not impacting any neighbor's property. And this, this is the cover letter that I've just cited. There are all the engineering statistics and analysis to back that up. Happy to hear any questions you may have. Respectfully, request approval of this application.
Okay. So what is the wind speed of a catastrophic wind speed that you would consider, your engineers would consider?
So it's more than thirty mile-per-hour, three-second gust wind speed with a zero-point-seven-five-inch radial ice. There's a whole description. It's more than that.
Okay. Bill?
Maybe further to answer Joe's questions on the failure. There's a fifty-two-foot radius failure zone.
Correct.
So is that the top section of the tower?
Correct.
What about the, the, the one-hundred-and-thirty feet, or the, yeah, one-hundred-and-thirty feet in the lower section?
I think it's both, any failure section, the total radius for falling is fifty-two feet.
Got you. One other question.
Certainly.
Is there a control building associated with the tower out there now?
A control, there are equipment cabinets.
Equipment.
Yes, sir. And those will remain. Those aren't shifting or moving at all.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else question for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, is there any more questions for staff on this? Now I'll open up for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Seventeen dash one-two-six.
Second.
Would you mind amending it to add in the one-hundred-and-twenty days after the equipment is moved for the old tower to be removed?
I'm fine with that. That'll be needed.
I've got it.
Just for the motion maker to acknowledge it in a second to agree to it.
Both of you guys?
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Longoria, with the addition of a hundred-and-twenty-eight, a hundred-and-twenty-day time limit to, once the tower is up and, and the old tower, the equipment's moved, the carriers, then within that one-hundred-and-twenty days, the old tower is removed. Okay? Any comments on that or discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously, Suti? Okay. All right, Suti, if we could move on to, please sound the next and final unfinished business item.
This item is consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number Seventeen O four three O seven, creating the Milton Greenspace Advisory Committee. Number of members, this is Agenda Item Number Seventeen One Two Seven. First presentation was at the May Fifteenth Council Meeting. I do have one public comment for this item, too. Mr. Ken Gerard.
If it's okay with council, I'll just go ahead and take the public comment first. That way, Ken needs to address anything. Council okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Please call the speaker.
This is Ms. Laura Renter.
Hi. I'm Laura Renter. I live at ten sixty Birmingham Road in Milton. I'm speaking about this because I really care about land conservation, in case you didn't know that. And I was surprised when I looked at the people who were chosen because they were people I didn't know, with the exception of one person who I actually encouraged to apply. And I, I had a lot of concerns about it because I hadn't heard these people be active in the land conservation group or in environmentalism or showing any interest in the city. So I decided to do an open records request and look at the actual applications and also find out, you know, who staff thought was most qualified. And I was pretty surprised because with, I was pretty surprised what I found because staff recommended thirteen candidates, thirteen candidates they thought were qualified out of the thirty-one. And you all ended up choosing five off of that list, and then you chose two out of the list that the applicants, that the staff didn't think were qualified. And correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, let me read this to you all, because this is what this committee is supposed to be doing, according to the Planning Commission. They're going to be looking at land for acquisition based on open space, looking at horse farms, undeveloped land, they're looking at it based on protecting natural resources, protecting wildlife habitats, protecting watersheds, they're evaluating it for the rural view shed, and protecting historic resources and agricultural resources such as horse farms. They're looking at trails, and they're looking at trails for walking, bagging, and horseback riding, which is a pretty specific thing, and you all have no one on your committee that has any knowledge of that. And then they're also supposed to be using conservation easements. They're supposed to know about transfer of developmental rights, purchase of developmental rights, and a number of other things that they're tasked actually to do. So I am really, there's a problem with lack of transparency here. I mean, the reality is, the qualifications, you all didn't choose anybody who had a lot of land conservation or environmental knowledge. You have people who applied. I've seen the applications. They were amongst the thirteen that were recommended by staff. You all intentionally rejected those eight people recommended by staff and chose two people who weren't. And let me say again, you know, the other issue is, there were no women. So you marginalized women, you marginalized the, anybody who has knowledge of environment and land conservation. I don't understand how you decide, how you choose to put somebody on this committee. Because I, you know, I looked at those applications, and I'm sorry, but I don't know what, how you decided. Clearly, you had different qualities that you were looking for than what staff did. So I have a lot of questions about this. I'd like to know what the different qualities were. I would like to know why you would choose to reject the people that the city recommended, and why these other two people were so much more qualified than the eight other people that you could have chosen that were recommended. I'd like to understand why you don't seem to value knowledge about land conservation when you've got a committee here that's about land conservation. Let's see. There's my page of questions. Here we go. This is the process. You, it says, this is the process, okay? It says, "The MGA, MCAG members shall be received based on an open nomination process by Milton citizens. City staff shall review the pool of applicants and shall undertake a culling process with due consideration given to public policies of objectives and considerations of the Greenspace Fund and otherwise referenced in this ordinance. And following that culling process, the city staff shall submit to the council a recommended list of qualified citizens. The city council shall take the list of qualified citizens under advisement and from the list formulate a proposed MGAC membership panel." This is not what happened. So can you tell me what did happen? I mean, why was, what, what were you trying to do? Because I watched all the stuff related to it not being political. How do we make this not political? And I was really happy because I thought, great, I will actually be counted on my knowledge. Other people will be counted on their knowledge and their work and their commitment to the city. And clearly, that is not what happened on this committee. And you all know that. So something else happened. And this is not a transparent process. You, you didn't choose the people most qualified. So who did you choose? I'm not going to speculate why you chose the people you did. I don't know why you did. But this doesn't add up. There's a real problem with transparency here. This is not the first, second, or third time you all have marginalized people with knowledge on environment or land conservation. Why? Anybody going to try to answer these questions? Or you just don't think you need to be transparent? Because this is not, I would bet this is illegal. I would bet you broke your policy here on the ordinance. You didn't even follow the, you're about to sign this, and you didn't even follow this process. This is not right, y'all. I don't know how I'm supposed to hold you all accountable for not following the process. How do I do that? Anybody over there know? Because they didn't follow this process that they're saying they were supposed to follow. Who holds, who holds the council responsible for not doing that? I mean, can you explain it to me? I just want to know. I put in my application, as did a lot of people, on good faith that this was going to be a non-political decision. And I don't really believe that's what happened. This is a really important committee. I don't know how the community would feel about you all choosing people who don't have the knowledge, who haven't ever done. And there are a lot of people who this doesn't make sense to. So I'd like to hear an answer. Mr. Mayor, you said there were 30 well-qualified people. The city chose 13 that were qualified. Why weren't those eight other people good enough for you all? Why would you choose to go around the stated process?
Just one minute left on comment.
What made those people more qualified? Why were the qualifications different? Why? Because you were not looking for the same things as staff.
Thank you. And just, in all due respect, Mr. Renter, thank you for your comments. As we all know, council doesn't go back and forth during public comment, but certainly welcome to reach out, and council's welcome to reach out, as well as myself are open to have a discussion with you after the meeting or at some point. But again, it's not an opportunity to go back and forth with questions during public comment. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you this evening an ordinance creating the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee that will, in fact, change simply some language pertaining to Section 2A. As the council is aware, the slate of membership on MGAC has already been selected. However, the ordinance specifically anticipated that once the number was established, that the actual number so set would then be filled into the ordinance later. And of course, that goes to primarily determining what, in fact, constitutes a quorum. And as is noted, the number selected was seven in 2A, and that is, in fact, the modification you would make. You will then see that that flows nicely into 2B, which provides that if, in fact, the number was, for instance, seven, then a quorum of MGAC will be four. So this would be in the form of an administrative housekeeping amendment to reflect the panel selection that the council has already made. Mr. Mayor, that is my presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions for Ken on that? Bill?
In your, in that same article, 2A, you inserted the number of members. Then the next phrase or clause was stricken to the determined following staff review of citizen applications. Then apparently inserted, appointed by the mayor and city council. What was that clause stricken?
Well, because the appointment by the mayor and city council is, in fact, what has occurred. The appointments have already been made.
Okay. Then in, in 2C then, you're still talking about recommendations.
Right. So the ordinance is not going to be completely rewritten. I mean, the ordinance included both the nomination process, but it's also going to be the document that's going to control almost, well, it's not really in the nature of a bylaws, but it's still going to contain, for instance, it's got a lot of criteria with respect to the minimum qualifications, et cetera. So that's not going to be all stricken out because we have our slate of membership. I mean, I suppose we could, but I don't know that that would make much sense at this point.
Okay. Well, up in 2B then, you speak about a quorum. And if we're going to modify this ordinance, and since there's been an odd number of members designated for this committee, it's kind of irrelevant.
That's right.
In the second, during the last clause, they're talking about an even number of.
That's right. That's right.
Does it make any sense, if we're going to clean this thing up, does it make any sense in going through and deleting?
We could.
The non-essential language.
Right. So what, you know, what you're grappling with, Councilmember Lusk, is the notion of preparing an ordinance that's identifying the makeup of a committee where we don't even, where at the time it was drafted, we didn't know how many would be on the committee.
Obviously.
A lot of times, that's not the way it's done. A lot of times, we would simply set in place the number and then build the ordinance around it. And that's why. But your point is well made. If we wanted to, for instance, adopt 2A, and then we also wanted to take 2B and say, strike everything involving the even-numbered membership, yeah, that would be fine.
Right. So we'll retain then 2C for further appointment of members. Is that correct?
Right. That would certainly be fine. I'll try to find where it says, to the extent there's any vacancies. I know that that language, I think, is in here somewhere. I just can't remember. Yeah. And so on paragraph four, on page 404, last full sentence on that sub-paragraph four, "Should any member of MGAC be unable to fulfill their duties and following removal by the city council, a midterm replacement shall be appointed using the same methodology identified in Sections 2D and E." So.
Okay. Then Article 2D, where it spells out the process of selection, receiving applications and then making selections. I guess maybe addressing Dr. Laura's comments there about this whole process, and this is still going to, 2D apparently is still going to be a part of this ordinance. Are we going to follow that process in the future should vacancies occur?
That would be my expectation, yes.
I guess I see some inconsistencies, obviously, in the way it was handled and what we continue to leave in this ordinance.
What does the council want me to say with respect to that? Is the concern, my understanding was that the list of applicants that were provided to the council all met the objective criteria as set forth in the ordinance, to the extent that there were some that were perceived to be more qualified than others. I'm certainly mindful of that, but I don't believe anybody was presented to the council for consideration that did not meet the minimum qualifications under the ordinance. That is my understanding.
That's correct.
Right.
That is correct.
So I guess the question would be, would the council want to clean the ordinance up now along with this? Or what's your thoughts, Bill and Matt?
Yeah, just a quick question. The, so obviously, if there are some things, we can obviously accept this, or we can defer it to have it cleaned, or we can clean it up while we're here. What happens if, or deny it, obviously. But what happens if it's deferred or denied? Does the committee not meet? If that's the case, I'm just curious how that procedure works.
You know, no. I mean, I think the committee would go ahead and meet, again, because the slate of, the committee has already been established by the council. I think, again, I'll say what I said initially. I think this is more of a housekeeping exercise. At least that's the way I viewed it. But if the council wants to go through here and take away anything that is inconsistent either with how the committee will go forward in the future, or to Councilmember Lusk's point, how a reappointment process should go, certainly the council could make that direction as well. I thought this was a fairly modest item, just filling in the number. But it's up to the council. Everything would be appropriate.
Was there any other questions on it? And the council could certainly make a motion one direction or not, to approve or deny, or for, or the other option is to make changes on it. So is there any other questions for?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we defer adopting this ordinance until after certain language has been cleaned up in here. And going back to 2A also, I'm not sure we had that much discussion about the total number of members on this board, but it, it might serve us well to have maybe a maximum of two alternate members, just in the event that people do roll off for certain personal reasons or unexpected circumstances. I think we've seen that in the past on other boards and committees. And I think, given the importance of this committee and their charge, I think it's essential that we do have a full complement of members on this board or committee. And just one comment that I have about that.
Okay. So I think you made a motion, Councilmember Lusk, for a deferral?
I defer, yes.
For two weeks?
Until our next regular meeting, which will be the 19th.
So between now and June 19th, how are we going to figure out what language needs to be changed? Because I heard a lot of comments. I didn't hear any direct, this needs to be changed from this to this. Are we just going to guess?
Or is the, legally, you know, Ken's off to change anything that doesn't match with?
Well, I mean, I've heard, I've heard, I've heard a couple of things. I've heard one would be the, in 2B, taking out the even-number language. Here, of course, the notion of perhaps having some alternate individuals. But again, the council's not taken action on that. So I mean, other than removing the language on the even-number of officers in 2B, I would, at this point, not be, you know, bringing you back anything else.
Can we put in language that all these positions are appointed by? Because I remember mentioning that last time. But I thought we moved on from that.
This, listen, this committee, this committee, okay, well, okay.
Okay. All right. Well, at this point, we've got a motion for a deferral for two weeks on this. And do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion for a deferral for two weeks from Councilmember Lusk, a second from Councilmember Coons. Is that correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Lusk, you just for a deferral?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Didn't pass.
Unfortunately, yeah, we've got, we've only got an even number.
We're down a man.
So, all right, Ken.
I'll make a motion. Does you have something you want to say?
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 17-127 with the recommended language that, from the city attorney's office, and taking out the even references.
I'll second that. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Longoria for approval, but taking out the language for, that states for an even number on there. That's been discussed. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I'll, a quick discussion on that. I think that's, I mean, I'm okay approving with the motion, knowing that we can, as individual councilmembers, bring back additional language if we want to fix it later on, which might make sense. I think it's important that we, you know, have something that, that works, that's in there. So I appreciate what you've done, Ken, as that goes, but I think we need to do that, so.
Ken?
If we chose at some point in time to make this a five-member committee or a nine-member committee, we could do that. This does not prohibit us from making that kind of changes.
No, ma'am.
That went out.
Change the process or change?
No.
Okay. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Everybody clear on what this motion is?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let that pass you now. Okay, Suti, if we move on to new business, if you'll please sound the next item.
Next item is consideration of a letter to the members of the local delegation transmitting the City of Milton's charter commissions, recommended city charter revisions, agenda item number 17143. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as the council is aware, the City of Milton in its charter has a recommendation, well, actually has a requirement for the establishment of a charter commission that was to meet. I've actually pulled the language up here in front of me. It's, the first meeting was in December of 2011, or the first establishment of the commission was in 2011, and then in five-year intervals thereafter. So this is an opportunity for an independent entity to be created, basically look at the operations of the City of Milton and make recommendations with respect to things that could be done to better run and the operations of the city by way of your charter. As everyone is aware, the charter is the foundational document with respect to a local government. In counties, it's called the enabling legislation. In municipalities, it's called the charter. But it's basically the bottom of the pyramid on how local governments work and how you function. It sets a lot of your, how about this, your ground rules on how you operate. So this year, pursuant to that requirement in our charter, senior staff did, in fact, and of course, the council is aware of this as well, we did assemble a charter commission, which has been dutifully meeting and going over very meticulously the charter and obviously hearing from staff and others with respect to the changes that need to be made, things that are working, things that could be working better, and modifications will make, hopefully, the city's operation better for the citizens and the government itself. The expectation has been, the charter commission has, in fact, completed their work, and they have, in fact, made a unanimous recommendation of their proposed changes. The actual was in your charter suggests that these changes are to go to your local delegation or to the general assembly for them to consider. Of course, the general assembly has the power to modify your charter anytime, but the expectation of your charter is that the work of the charter commission goes to the delegation for them to consider it. And that's what we're doing, and that's what we did five years ago as well. This is the opportunity for you to review the work of the charter commission in summary format. It's both here and in further detail. It's, you've got a full copy of the charter as well. I think you'll find in your agenda packet, there is a letter signed by every member of the charter commission. That letter dated May 15 of 2017. And Mr. Mayor, I don't want to overly bog on the meeting, but if you want me or Ms. Inglis or the city manager to go through these modifications or the proposed modifications to the charter, kind of where they came from and what they proposed to do, we're happy to do that. Or if you just want to ask us questions based upon already having reviewed them, that would be perfectly fine as well. I will say that at the end of the presentation, I would ask that you ratify the letter and recommendations.
Okay. I'd probably prefer to at least read them out in public and, you know, for the record and make a brief.
Okay.
And then, any questions that councilmen have?
What are we looking to read?
I was going to go through the summary.
Yeah, summarize it.
I'm not going to ask you to read that.
I'm not going to ask you to read that, Ken. I'll read it. Cost more if I read it. Do you want me to read them one by one and then...
Yeah.
So the, this is a summary that I had asked Christine to put together to precede the changes, so you'd have a little bit easier time going through it. I believe that all of these were part of the original document, that the original information we put out in front of you before we, we convened the, the charter commission. So section point one-two-sub-B municipal powers, this will be found on page two of the, the larger document. Subsection eight, cultural arts, to encourage local exploration, generate pride, showcase local artists, and increase tourism for the city. Um, do I, do I need, should I read the other sections to it?
Yeah, that, that's...
Then I shall.
Yeah.
Um, subsection nine, there are no changes. Subsection ten, environmental protection, conservation was the added piece, to protect and preserve the natural resources, environment, and vital areas of the city, the region, and the state through the preservation and improvement of air quality, the restoration and maintenance of water resources, the control of erosion and sedimentation, the management of stormwater, and establishment of a stormwater utility, the management of solid and hazardous waste, and other necessary actions for the protection of the environment to include the acquisition and holding of conservation land and conservation easements. Last part was added as well. I'm moving on to the next section. Um, sub, section one-twelve-sub-B municipal powers, it's found on page five. Section forty-one, the stricken piece, correct, that's all that is, is stricken. For all years, the billing date or dates and due date or dates for municipal ad valorem taxes shall be the same as for Fulton County, County ad valorem, ad valorem taxes. Was subsection forty-two added? Or is...
It's just changing the number from forty-one to forty-two.
That, so the number was changed to forty-two on that one. Section two-fourteen, compensation expenses, found on page eight in the packet, is just a cleanup of the language for compensation and expenses. The annual salary of the mayor shall be $23,000, and the annual salary for each council member shall be $13,000. Such salaries shall be paid from municipal, municipal funds in a, in bi-weekly installments. That was the change. The city council may provide for the reimbursement of expenses actually necessarily incurred by the mayor and members of the council in carrying out their duties. Section three-fifteen, voting, page eleven, um, the addition of electronic, but I'll, I'll read the sentence in it. It's subsection A. Except as otherwise provided in subsection C of this section, four council members shall constitute a quorum and shall be authorized to transact the business of, of the city council. For voting in quorum purposes, the mayor shall be counted as one of the council members. Voting on the adoption of ordinances shall be by electric or voice vote. The word electric, or...
Electronic.
Electronic, sorry. Um, it's only going to go downhill from here. Um, or voice vote, and the vote shall be recorded in the journal. The addition of the electronic or was the addition for that piece. Section three-eighteen, emergencies, found on page twelve. I'm not, I don't think you need me to go through that. I'm just going to, we changed the word from repair to repaid. It was purely clerical. Codification of ordinances, three-twenty. Subsection A, the clerk shall authenticate by the clerk's signature and record in full a properly indexed digital version or book kept for that purpose. All ordinances adopted by the council, the addition, of course, there was the digital version. Subsection B of the same section, the city shall provide for the preparation of a general, general codification of all the ordinances of the city having the force and effect of law. The general codification shall be adopted by the city council by ordinance and shall be published promptly, together with all amendments thereto, and shall contain such codes of technical regulations and other rules and regulations as the city council may specify. The compilation shall be known and cited officially as the code of the City of Milton, Georgia. Copies of the code shall be available to all officers, departments, and agencies of the city, and shall be made available to the public online free of charge. We changed furnished to available, changed or purchased by to to the public at a reasonable price, was stricken, and it's online for free. Subsection three-dash-twenty-three-dot-twenty-two, powers and duties of mayor, page fourteen, subsection eight was stricken, have the authority to appoint city council, city, city council committees, and appoint council members to oversee and report on the functions of the various departments of the city, subject to confirmation by the city council. All that was stricken. Section three-twenty-five, powers and duties of city manager, page sixteen of the packet. Subsection ten was added? As delegated by the city council, may execute all lawful contracts on behalf of the city as to matters within said officer's jurisdiction, to the extent that all such contracts are funded in the city budget, except such as may be otherwise provided by law. Provided, however, that no contract purchase or obligation requiring a budget amount shall be valid and binding until the approval of the council. Section six-twenty-eight, capital improvements, page twenty-three in the packet. After the conducting of a public hearing, the city council shall adopt by ordinance the final capital improvements budget for the ensuing fiscal year on or before the date fixed by ordinance of the council. No appropriations provided for, in a, in a prior capital improvements budget shall lapse until the purpose for which the appropriations were made shall have been accomplished or abandoned, provided, however, the city manager, mayor was stricken, may submit amendments to the capital improvement budget at any time during the fiscal year, accompanied by any recommendations. Any such amendments to the capital improvement budget shall become effective only upon adoption by a majority vote of the city council. Six-dot-thirty, procurement and property management. Except as otherwise authorized in this section, no contract with the city shall be binding on the city unless subsection three. It is made or authorized by the city council, and such approval is entered in the city council journal or proceedings pursuant to section three-fourteen of this charter. The council shall be authorized to delegate by ordinance, contract signing authority to the city manager for contracts with a maximum amount of $50,000, with a term of no more than a single fiscal year, upon the requirement that such contracts be subsequently ratified by council. The ordinance authorizing such delegate, delegation may be repealed at any time by majority approval of council. Subsection six-dash-thirty-one, purchasing, this was stricken, city council shall, by ordinance, prescribe procedures for a system of centralized purchasing for the city. That's it.
Okay. Do you have any questions or comments for council and, you know, it's Matt?
Two questions. So electronic votes. Application-wise, how did you anticipate as, how did they anticipate that was going to actually happen? Did somebody email Sudi with their vote, or, or a light coming up?
No, there would have been a voting board...
I wanted to make sure, I thought that was it, but I wanted to see if that was, that was it. The other thing I wanted to do, we talked about in section one-point-one-two, item ten, which was formerly nine, the very end, and the other necessary actions for the protection of the environment to include the acquisition and holding of conservation land and conservation easements. The only thing I'd like to do is add, and partnerships with land trusts to that comment, if we can. And the reason being is because, you know, acquisition of land is spending money, partnerships with land trusts are ways that we can get around without having to spend money, but to achieve some of those results.
Councilmember Coons, let me make a, let me make a recommendation, if I could. My recommendation would be that, first of all, my preference would be that this document, which is the collective will of the charter commission, be sent in a, I'm going to try this word, in an adulterated fashion to the, to the, to the delegation.
Sure.
The city council, under home rule, always has the ability to make modifications to its charter that the council, in your enlightened wisdom, may in fact believe is appropriate. So just because you don't get it here, you get here, does not mean we precluded from doing that, and so we could just take up that consideration at any other time and get that in.
That's fine. That's why I was bringing it up, because I had the question.
Fair point.
Okay.
No, that, I was going to point that out, because I, I didn't think, well, two things. I thought this needs to go later.
Yeah.
And I didn't think that this precluded us from doing anything that we needed to do.
That's correct.
So if there was a change, that would be what I'd make, but right now, there is none to make.
Okay. Bill?
In this same article, related to stormwater utility, is, is that an allowable duty, or is it a mandated duty?
Well, I can answer one of those. And with respect to whether it's an allowable duty, I can say that it absolutely is an allowable duty. In fact, there are several jurisdictions in Georgia that have stormwater utilities. This would simply allow the City of Milton to have one, but by no means require it.
So the way it reads, it's an allowable...
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? I think we did have public comment.
One public comment, yes.
Is council okay here in the public comment at this point?
Yep.
Okay. All right, if you please call it.
That comes from Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, one-five-six-two-five, Canterbury Chase, Milton, Georgia. On the fly here, I put together some comments relative to this topic, because I attended all three of the charter commission meetings. I was the only citizen that did attend. I spoke at the second meeting. I asked the charter commission to take their time. They're supposed to review the experience of the city over the previous five years. That was not done, and I reminded the charter commission of that. At the last meeting, a city council member attended the meeting. He came in late, but he was nevertheless allowed to speak, by filling out a comment card. He basically told the charter commission to expedite what they were doing, which I thought was highly inappropriate. So public comment had to be opened up a second time. Then the charter commission continued with their deliberations, and the council member interrupted yet a third time. Public comment had to be opened for a third time. I have some issues with this. I don't think that council members should attend charter commission meetings. I think if they do attend and they're going to speak, they should fill out a comment card, like every other citizen. I don't think that council members should interrupt the charter commission. I don't think that they should direct the charter commission. I have, I have a real issue with special rules for council members versus citizens. Council members should not be interfering in the proceedings of commissions, whether it's the charter commission or other committees. I want to remind council that our charter is akin to the U.S. Constitution for our city. Tonight, the city attorney told us it's the foundation for our city. Changes to the charter are a serious business. Changes should be rigorously made, they should be transparent, they should involve discussion and debate at council, they should involve notification to citizens, they should involve the opportunity for multiple public input. I remain, I remind city council that there are two ways to change the charter. One is through home rule. That means that the seven of you make a decision as to what changes need to be made to the charter. These changes need to be discussed and debated, and again, citizens need to be able to have public input. The other way that the charter can be changed is through the charter commission. It's almost like a constitutional convention in some ways. Certain changes to the charter do require additional approval from the state legislature. However, the legislature should not supplant the charter commission or home rule, unless there are serious problems with the city. It's kind of like the state taking over a school system that's failing. So I just want to remind the city council of this, because at a future date, I will be addressing changes to the charter. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Okay. All right, so at this point, do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if the council has any additional questions, now would be the time, but if not, if you understand what would be going to the delegation, which is where this is going to be going, for them to consider, a motion to approve the recommended changes as proposed, as well as the letter would be in order.
Okay, are there any other questions on this, or anybody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a consideration of a letter to the members of the local delegation transmitting the City of Milton's charter commission recommended city charter revisions, agenda item numbers one-seven-dash-one-four-three.
Second motion. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Coons with a second from, from Member Lusk. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe that was unanimous, Sudi. Okay. All right, we'll move on to reports and presentations. I want to make a statement, as we, I'm sure everybody here has heard, what Fulton County tax assessor has sent out their notifications, and obviously, there are some properties and homes that have been, and possibly businesses, that the assessor has, has given much higher value. So I'm sure all of you, obviously, have heard, heard from folks, concerned citizens and property owners, I myself, as well as I know some of the councils reached out to county commission, which, as we know, the county commission doesn't exactly rule that, the assessors, as we don't, but there is concern, and that we've reached, reached out. There's also some, a couple of meetings with the county commissioners, and some ideas. I know I've reached out to state legislators, too, about the process and, and, and solutions for it, if any. So just want to, obviously, if anybody has any input, but, you know, let everybody know we are looking into, you know, certain things, not things that we can directly have legal authority to control or change, but that I believe everybody is, is interested in it and putting forth the required effort to try to come to some, some resolution at a, at a future date, so. Anything on council want to report on?
I have one question for Stacy concerning that. In talking to our county commissioners, they said that even though some of the assessed properties went up fifty, hundred percent, that the property tax would only go up three percent based on state law, unless there were improvements to the property, but that Milton tax did not have that same restriction and could go up based on the new assessed property. Do you know what that is all about?
No.
Okay.
There may be something we, if you guys could look into...
That's something I think we need to look into, because if it's, if that's the way it is for counties, we may want to make it that way for the city, for our residents, too. And just see, I mean, that was a comment that was made to me at the Memorial Day celebration by, you know, one of our county commissioners, is that even though assessments may have gone up fifty percent, the property tax itself can only go up three percent a year, and it could go up three percent every year until it got to that assessed value, but it would only be three percent a...
I think he's probably talking about the CPI frozen thing. I'll, I'll take a look at that.
Look at that, because I'd just like to know, because I think it'd be something to be important to let our, I mean, obviously, if somebody has improvements to the property, they can go up based on those improvements, but if there's no improvements to the property, he said that the CPI, and I didn't know that that three percent was a, a CPI frozen thing, was just for a specific period of time, or if it was still ongoing, but let's look into that and make sure we have that information.
And, Matt?
Yes, I agree with that. I want to congratulate Lusk as well on the Memorial Day celebration, too. That was an excellent, excellent deal, and we had over, what, two-hundred people there, and, yeah, so I'm not going to steal your thunder, but I just want to say good job putting that together. So, anyway, go ahead.
Well, I attribute that to everybody that participated in it, including, obviously, staff, Courtney and, and Shannon, and police department, fire department, and other... staff, Courtney and Shannon and police department, fire department, and other members of staff, I think, pulled it off fairly well, that's what I think.
And the weather, how about?
I had a special meeting with the powers that be that.
That was, that was, the paratrooper coming down with the flag was quite impressive, so.
Yes. And we, and I was asked the question, what, it paid about five hundred dollars for the plane, a thousand dollars for the jumper that the city paid for, but he donated that to the, for the VFW Children's Fund, right?
That's correct. It's a SANA fund that funds toys for deployed soldiers at Fort Benning. That's been an ongoing benefit for the last several years with the local VFW post.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to report on?
Oh, and.
Matt?
A lot of, a lot of good people put together the crosses and took them down this past weekend as well, and that was a lot of work, but we had a, the rain was helpful for that, because it was a lot easier to get them in and out this year, easy as we passed.
You could just push it in the ground.
Right, exactly, so.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to staff.
All right. Get ready. We've been able to fill one of our key positions here recently. Our new facilities manager started last week. Dennis Miller comes to us with thirty years of experience managing Roswell's facility, so he's a great addition to our team.
Sounds like Roswell's not too happy about losing him.
Well, we're happy to take him.
It's not the Dennis Miller from Fox, no.
It is not. It is not.
He's got a good type of humor.
He's humorous, but he's not really funny. So I'll try and introduce him to you all as, as we crawl paths. Also wanted to say that we've finally completed all of our new public works contracts. As you know, our public works service contracts ended at the start of this year, and we've been working towards getting everybody under contract with that. We now have four new contractors on board. Triscapes is handling our parks and facilities. NGL is handling all of our right-of-way mowing. Siemens continues to work on our traffic signals, and Roadworks is handling all of our right-of-way maintenance. All very qualified firms, we're happy to have them on board. We had anticipated costs going up with this, these new contracts. We actually brought them in under what was anticipated, so we're going to see some savings there. So not only did we save some money, but we increased our capabilities a great deal on those. So while it may take them a little bit to get up and running and understanding the city, I would anticipate that over the next few years, we'll have a big increase in our capabilities in public work, so that's a good thing. Gravel Road Maintenance started today. They're starting on the north side, Clarity Darby, those areas, and working their way south. Anticipate that takes probably two to three weeks, depending on the weather. And we got our first T-SLOSS distribution here in the past month. Revenues were down about twenty-five percent from what was expected. That was true countywide, probably because of collections. We're hoping that those will pick back up here in the next couple of distributions, and we'll get back on track with those. We are moving forward with three of our projects. Staff is working with GDOT on the State Route one forty green intersection, looking at signal warrants at that particular location. And then we have moved forward with the design on Crab Apple, the northeast connector, which would be the Mayfield Charlotte intersection improvement, as well as the extension of Charlotte from that intersection improvement around to east side of the roundabout that's being constructed right in front of Strawberry Fields with our current Crab Apple Road project. Also moving forward with the Hopewell at Bethany's intersection improvement, so our offset intersection there that we had done some work on in the past, we're bringing that back up. So we've put out an RFP for Design Services on those two, and those are due tomorrow. So we're moving forward with those, and we'll keep an eye on the distribution as, as they continue to come in. And that is it for me tonight.
Okay, Bill, you have a question?
Two other projects, Red Road, Hopewell Road.
Red Road intersection, the turn lane construction is being done under our pavement management program this year. We did get bids on the pavement management program. They came in about twenty percent over budget, so we're working with the contractor now to get those back in line, and you'll probably be seeing that contract come forward, hopefully in the next couple of meetings to get them kicked off. I'm sorry, what was the other one?
Well, I guess the same issue, Red Road, Hopewell intersection, even though the prices in pavement management prices have come in over budget, is that still going to allow that intersection improvement to happen or not?
It is. We think we have some changes that we can make to that contract that don't affect that particular portion of it, and makes sense in the long run, as we coordinate those projects with our T-SLOSS project, so we'll be bringing that forward, hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Okay, and the other one is the sidewalks on Mayfield.
We're hoping to get that wrapped up with GDOT now to bid in the month of June.
Seventeen?
Seventeen, yes, sir.
Okay.
Fermanham Highway and Batesville Road, it still backs up very, way past the, the roundabout on a regular basis. Have we gotten any more information from the state on what we can do there and how many cars will need to stack in a turn lane?
We have talked to them about that, and they're working on some additional modeling. So when they originally looked at that intersection, what they thought was happening and what they saw happening in the field were two different things. So they were looking to expand their model to try and get a better correlation between the two, so that whatever improvements came out of that analysis would, would work in the real world. So I don't have a definitive for you, other than they're working on that model.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Carter. Chief?
Mayor, council, good evening again. First, I want to thank you for the proclamation for the firefighters and the MDA program. We've completed our MDA boot drive for two thousand seventeen, and after six days of hard work and sweat out in those streets, the firefighters collected seventy-nine thousand three hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents this year, which then continues to place us in number one spot in the state of Georgia for our boot drive efforts, so very proud of those guys. They've done a great job out there, so. The other thing was the pharmacy agreement. As you know, I've mentioned before that the North Fulton Hospital has no longer wanted to participate in that agreement. We have identified a second pharmacy that has been more than helpful and willing to step up and provide all our medications for our ALS and EMS system that we provide. We made that final transition today without any interruption in service, so we no longer are relying on North Fulton. We have a new pharmacy in place, so we're, we're happy that that was an easy transition with, with no problems there at all, so. And one of the last things that, two weeks ago, we had EMS Week and where we participated in a mass CPR day, which was a nationwide program. I could not tell you at this point what the numbers were for how many people were taught CPR throughout the nation, but I can tell you that the Milton firefighters worked with Home Depot and put a little CPR training site out in their front parking lot, and we were able to train twenty-four people as they were walking in and out of Home Depot. So it's, it's a small start, but it's something that we can plan on going in the future and continue to do that, so. But twenty-four people know CPR today, so which maybe will help somebody in the future, so. If you don't have any questions, that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Mayor and council. I'm just going to give a very quick recap. We had a busy May, as you know, and Memorial Day, a great success, thank you very much. But I think the success of that event, and really of all of our events, is thanks to community involvement, as you saw at Memorial Day, and we have veterans involved, we have kids involved, and we have explorers involved, we have every department involved, and the success of all of those, all of those activities and the events that we have contributes to our community and sense of belonging. I think that's why they're so successful. Looking ahead, we have our Beach Bash, June twenty-fourth, Crab Apple Fest, of course, in October, and Carving and Crab Apple in October. We're making some changes to events past that. In November, Veterans Day, we're going to have a Veterans Day breakfast here at, at City Hall, which also will host our Milton Literary Festival that day, which is going to feature veterans who are authors. Actually, at the Veterans Breakfast, General A.J. Tony Teta has accepted our invitation to speak, so we'll be sending out invitations via social media, emails, newspaper releases to all of our, of course, all of our veterans, but all of our citizens to join us at that breakfast, and of course, at the literary festival too. We're also, another change is that we're combining Christmas and Crab Apple with our tree lighting, since we have the new tree at Broadwell. Christmas and Crab Apple is already such a big event, we're going to extend that event just a few minutes into the, into the evening and do our tree lighting. Then my hope is that by partnering with CCA and then our downtown businesses, that as we light the tree, all of downtown can light. So as we do the countdown, not only will the tree at Broadwell light up, but City Hall will light up, our trees here, and Crab Apple Road will light up. So we'll be working with those businesses to sort of make all of that shine and kick off the Christmas season, and also get people to participate in our Crab Apple businesses and join, they'll have some specials and things like that. So we're still working on that with CCA. And otherwise, we continue to find ways to reach, reach different groups in Milton. Of course, our special needs community, our elderly, people who aren't on social media, we continue to find ways to reach them and their families, ultimately creating a community that cares. Thank you very much.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. No one has anything else, that'll conclude our meeting. I have a motion to adjourn. Tell me. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?